It is now six P M. On Wednesday, May third, two thousand and twenty-three. I will call this meeting of the Miami Township Montgomery County Board of Trustees to order. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the God that the voice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll, Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Thank you.
Reading of casualties, Chief Stegelmeyer.
Good evening, Board. The following is the list of first responder casualties for the period of April nineteenth through May the third. Rory Seawell, North Haswell Volunteer Fire Department, Tennessee, end of watch, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Everybody, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We have a special guest, Mr. McManus, our Montgomery County Treasurer. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Of course. Of course, yes. That brings me back to my old school board days, because they would just get so mad that you want to start yelling before they told you who they were. Well, it is a pleasure to be here. Members of the Board of Trustees and staff, thank you so much, and congratulations on coming onboard, and to the Board, congratulations on your success last night. I know, I'm sure that was hard worked, and so I know that you can look forward to the results that that will provide. And let me just say, it's an honor to be here. One of the things that I always enjoy doing is coming to other local governing bodies, whether they be cities, townships, school boards, others, and coming by saying hello and just kind of providing you with some general information on how the Treasurer's Office can help you as a local government, but also help your constituents who may be in need of our services. And let me introduce my colleague who's with me here. This, oh, look, she's over there doing her job. There it is, Missy Mae Walters. She is Director of Communications and External Relations for the Treasurer's Office. That includes things like this, making sure that we're keeping our local government partners happy. For those of you who I haven't met, I have been in office now for a little over a year and a half, elected in two thousand and twenty, took office in two thousand and twenty-one. Strange fact for you, if you're ever elected county treasurer one day, which I hope you don't run too soon, you will be, you take office in September, the September following the November election. You have to wait like ten months to take office. So, yeah, I've been in there for a year and a half, and it's been wonderful. I have absolutely loved it. Hopefully, everybody, the elected officials on the Board received our annual report. That's a new tradition that the Treasurer's Office is starting, and you've also been provided with a copy. But just to share with you a few highlights, last year's property tax collection, believe it or not, marked the county's highest collection on record. The county collected nine hundred and twenty-three million dollars in property taxes. If you don't know already, Montgomery County has about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand real estate parcels, and the Treasurer's Office is responsible for the collection of those taxes on those parcels generally twice a year. Another item of importance was, and this has been, this was a really big push, and one of my biggest efforts, and it'll eat up a pretty good chunk of what I'll be telling you about this evening. So when I came into office, there was almost a quarter billion dollars in property taxes owed to the county. Can you believe that? About twenty-eight thousand properties were tax delinquent. And one of the pieces that we noted in our annual report was, over the course of that year and a half, we were able to take down that total from twenty-eight thousand to nineteen thousand. And that's really, really good news, not just for all of those who actually pay their taxes, but it's good news for our local governments who are counting on that revenue through the aggressive collection of delinquent taxes. So after years and years of accumulation, we managed to turn that trend around and take a considerable amount of parcels off the delinquent totals. And so as you would have read in the annual report, for the first year and in many years, we've managed to turn that around. So, and we, by the way, during that period of time, collected about sixty-four million dollars in delinquent taxes. Also, good news, and something that doesn't often get publicized about the Treasurer's Office, the Treasurer is not just the county's banker and tax collector, but also the county's investment officer. We are responsible for the very careful investment of hundreds of millions of dollars. And last year, our fund closed with eight hundred and ten million dollars, and that is, I'm very happy to say, the highest total on record in the county's history, which is great news, because it earned eight point three million dollars for the people of Montgomery County, which is great. Just like Miami Township, I have a, I have a passion for fiscal responsibility, and so I think it's great when you can earn money to then offset, you know, various general fund expenditures, which is what's great news for the county. And without further ado, we'll dive right in. So, some things I have in front of you. In this packet includes information on how the Treasurer's Office can help the township and how the Treasurer's Office can help with your constituents. One of the things I normally kind of wait at the end to talk about, but I think I'll talk about it now, is information that is specific to Miami Township. And this is great news for you, and you should be very proud of your property owners, because they have done tremendous work. Miami Township really stands out as an outlier here in terms of property owners meeting their financial obligations. You will have seen in your packet this form, says, at the top, it says Miami Township Taxes Bill in twenty-two. What you don't have in front of you is the difference in just a year that we have seen in Miami Township. So you'll see there the total number of taxes billed in twenty-two, that is a little over fifty-two million dollars. That is an increase of two million dollars over previous year. You'll then see the number of parcels in Miami Township, along with the breakdown by type. I always think that's interesting, is the breakdown by type in terms of parcels across the county. Here's the great news. Look at this. Miami Township Delinquency, and that's referring to delinquent taxes owed, out of six thousand four hundred and forty-nine parcels, only sixty in Miami Township are delinquent. That's a big deal. So that's really, really good news for you and for, you know, your local schools, and it really speaks to your property owners. That sixty is a decrease of thirty-eight parcels that were delinquent last year. So thirty-eight got taken off the total for a remainder of sixty. I'll be talking about delinquent plans here in a moment. Basically, what a delinquency plan is with our office is, somebody's taxed delinquent, they come into our office, they get on a contract promising to pay their back taxes and installments. You can see that nearly half, nearly half of your residents who may be experiencing difficulty paying their taxes are already proactively engaged with our office to work on a resolution to get back on track. That forty-five percent, which by the way is an eleven percent increase from last year, is great, because again, your residents are already communicating with our office and have taken the step of getting on a contract to get back on track in terms of their property taxes. Great news for any real estate parcels in Miami Township that are classified as residential. There are only forty-eight parcels that are taxed delinquent for a very small total of two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. That is a net decrease of sixty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars from last year, which is wonderful, as you can see, the trend is very much headed in the right direction. And in terms of the delinquent real estate, there was a huge reduction in tax delinquency for any commercial parcels. Your current delinquent parcels that are other, meaning commercial, industrial, only twelve, for a total of three hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. That is a decrease of two hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. So I wanted to share that with you, because it'll kind of put in context some of the other things I'll be talking about, but that data right there really speaks for itself. You know, this is, Montgomery County is a community of lots of different cities and townships and over half a million people, and I visit a lot of communities who really know that they must make tax delinquent recovery a huge priority for their fiscal bottom line, and it is not easy work. So the fact that y'all are doing so well, really, you should be proud about that, and your residents and your property owners should be proud about that. So congratulations. Before I move on, any questions on that data? All right, seeing none. So then we'll get into the rest of the packet. By the way, what are some of the cool things I brought? Well, no presentation is complete without, of course, your handy general information guide. I fully encourage you to give this to your front office staff, who during property tax collection may or may not be bombarded with phone calls, like they are in some cities, townships, and school districts. And so your front office staff will know a little bit of information about our office and where to send callers. This presentation would not be complete without a wonderful notepad. So that you have in front of you. So first, how can the Treasurer's Office help your constituents? So first, you'll see this, this plan right here. Now, this is a blank one, it doesn't have our current logo on it, but this is the general design. You will have seen this, this is the prepayment application. You will see this in all the tax bills that go out, but we're about to get even more aggressive with it. Montgomery County does an extraordinary job of administering this prepayment application. We actually have, and it was a surprise to me, we actually have counties that are larger than us coming to Montgomery County to see how we administer this program, because there are other counties who are wanting to replicate the efforts here in Montgomery County. And so this county does this very well. So what this is, as we all know, property taxes are not an inexpensive chunk out of our fiscal activity throughout the year. It's a significant invest, it's a significant amount in anyone's life, in any county, in any state. So one thing we recognize is, we want folks to know their options. You know, there are, especially in difficult economic times like this, somebody may forget that it's tax time coming up, and all of a sudden they have a big bill in their mail, and they scratch their head and they say, oh, my gosh, how am I going to meet this financial obligation? And we all know how that goes. So one of the things that we provide at the Treasurer's Office is this opportunity for prepayment, and I would ask you to tell your constituents about it. This allows our local residents and property owners to enter into this arrangement with our office, where property owners can split up their property tax payments into essentially month to month. So they get twelve payments rather than just one or two a year. It is extraordinarily helpful. It helps people stay on track, which is really good for our local governments. It takes the guessing work out of it. We even go so far as to, when folks request it, we send them what we call little coupons in the mail, little slips of paper, twelve of them, and so they can write out a check for that exact amount, stick the coupon in the envelope, and send it back to us. It is a wonderful option, and it's not one that's adopted in every county, but more and more counties are looking to do it. So one of the other things we can do is we can automatically withdraw those payments from individuals' bank accounts, either on a monthly basis or on a semi-annual basis, which is really convenient for your taxpayers. And it is growing. One thing you'll see in the annual report is that our prepayment program continues to see exponential growth. And frankly, I would love to get more and more people on prepayment, because it cuts down on the amount of checks coming into the Treasurer's Office, which I can promise you, when you're collecting nine hundred and twenty-three million dollars with a staff of thirty people, it moves very fast, and there's a lot of paperwork involved. So the more people who get on prepayment or who get on electronic funds withdrawals, it makes it more efficient for everybody. Another way we can help your residents, you'll see in here a program I just alluded to, delinquent slash prepayment contract. This is for individuals who are taxed delinquent. Again, one of my biggest areas of priority throughout my time has been the reversal of the long-held trend of delinquency in this county, which was just not beneficial to anyone. And so part of that effort involves getting people enrolled in these delinquency contracts. How this works is, and if you know someone who's taxed delinquent and who's nervous about losing their home, because unfortunately, one of the jobs I have is serving as the plaintiff in all property tax foreclosures in Montgomery County. A taxed delinquent individual can enroll in a prepayment contract with our office. We require twenty percent of their overall delinquency, and then we set them up on a contract generally not going over two years. While they are on this contract, they are also paying their current taxes. There are some counties that don't do that, they just put them on a contract for their delinquent taxes. What you see more often than not is, while folks may be paying on their delinquencies, maybe they fall behind and they accidentally forget to pay their current taxes. So we enroll them in both, and then as soon as they're done with that, we put them on a prepayment contract. So, and what I tell folks often is, when you get on that delinquency contract, it takes you off of the tax lien eligibility list, which of course, as you also know, one of my jobs, and one of the most effective ways in the recovery of delinquent dollars is the sale of tax liens, which I do quite a bit of. And while they are enrolled in a delinquency contract, when they're current, when they're making their payments on time, the Treasurer's Office will not sell a tax lien on their property. Additionally, we will not foreclose on them while they are current. I can't tell you the sheer number of times where I've sold a lien on somebody's property or foreclosed on somebody, only to get a call, hey, I was sending in a payment here and there, you know, I sent one this month, and I sent one that month, and unfortunately, that just doesn't meet the mark. You know, no office can be expected to independently monitor two hundred and fifty-seven thousand parcels for individual payments every day throughout the year. You have to be on a contract, you have to be on the list. So if you know somebody who's taxed delinquent, if one of your constituents is experiencing trouble, please, please reach out to Missy or I directly, and we will make sure that we get in touch with your constituent and try to see if we can get them on a prepay, on a delinquency contract. One thing I always do say is, we've reformed the delinquency contract process. In the past, there were many individuals who had been on ten, twelve delinquency contracts, and that was just not okay. Because as you can imagine, there are some people out there who would simply make the initial down payment and never make another payment, and they would do this year after year after year and would never get current. And so we put a stop to a lot of that and said, no, we're going to limit it. So not everybody is eligible for a delinquency contract, but many are. This program is, has really, really taken off, especially during the real estate boom. Now, you're very fortunate here in Miami Township, because you don't have a lot of blighted properties, but this program right here is not specific to blighted properties. Depositor foreclosure. This program is not seen in every county. This is only seen in the larger counties. Depositor foreclosure, what is that? And as you can imagine, before I tell you what it is and why I'm bringing it up to you, is one of the most frequently asked questions I get is, hey, does Montgomery County have any program whereby individuals can go after taxed delinquent properties so we can maybe fix them up and sell them or live in them? And the answer is yes, and it is this depositor foreclosure program. Depositor foreclosure, an individual comes into the office after having identified a taxed delinquent property in the county. That individual fills out this application and brings in a check, two thousand dollars for a residential property, three thousand for commercial or industrial. At that point, our office then ensures that the parcel is eligible for depositor foreclosure, i.e., we haven't sold a lien on it, we haven't already put it into foreclosure ourselves, it's not in bankruptcy, et cetera. Assuming it's eligible, we then work with the prosecutor's office to force that property into a judicial tax foreclosure case. One thing to keep in mind is, unlike the expedited foreclosure, which I'll tell you about in a minute, depositor foreclosure, they do not need to be vacant. The house may be occupied, and it needs only be taxed delinquent. One of the things I always mention on this is, the Treasurer's Office, we do not publicize the name of the depositor, which I, you can probably imagine why that's a smart thing, because if a family member is filing on another family member or a neighbor on a neighbor, you obviously don't want to list the name of the depositor, because that could create a really bad situation. So the name of the depositor is shielded from public record, per the prosecutor, and we do not include that in the filings. So, and as someone who's a local elected official in Dayton, I got this question often, so for our elected officials, when you have people who come up to you and say, there is this house in my neighborhood, it is a mess, there is something bad going on inside the house, they're running a chop shop, they're running drugs, they're running something. Is there anything that can be done outside calling law enforcement every night or trying to get it nuisanceed? One of the first questions you should ask yourself, and you feel free to call me, or you should ask the constituent, is, is the property taxed delinquent? Because if it's taxed delinquent, there are options there, and your neighbor or neighbors may be interested in thinking about this, because, and you all know what happens in a foreclosure, if the individuals who own the home do not make the payments, it goes to sheriff's sale, and the owner is then dispossessed from the property, for that property to be sold to someone who will hopefully be paying the taxes on it. So, you know, one of the things that I valued most when I was also an elected official, but on a different level, was when folks would come by from the county or the state and say things that would make my life a little easier. And I imagine you get phone calls from people saying, what about this house in our neighborhood? So if it's taxed delinquent, your constituents have options there, that they do not even need to engage with Miami Township on. That's just between them and the Treasurer's Office. So I encourage you to think about that. And again, it, you know, it may be a situation where the depositor wants to live in the house that they're trying to foreclose on, it may be that they simply want to acquire it, to fix it up and sell it. But how it works is, after the case has been successfully, successfully winded its way through the court system, that property then goes to sheriff's sale like any other property. Then the depositor has the opportunity to bid on the property if he or she, he or she so chooses. If the depositor is the highest bidder, that two thousand dollar or three thousand is credited towards the sale. If they are not the highest bidder of it, then that deposit is returned. So those are a few ways that we can help your constituents. By far and away, and I don't want to keep you here for twelve hours, but by far and away, one of the biggest ways that we can help your constituents is issues with their property taxes. If they want to know how much they owe, if they want to know if they have options, if they want to know why they haven't gotten their coupons, if they want to know why, you know, a tax bill lists X, Y, and Z, I want you to always feel free to contact Missy or I directly, and we will make sure to set your constituents up with somebody who can answer all of their questions. You don't need to worry about trying to answer all that yourself. If you've got a busy day or something, let us make your life a little easier. How can, well, before I move to how we can help the township, any questions on the points relative to constituent services? No? Okay. How can we help your local government? One of the ways, and for the lawyers in the room, you'll like this, one of the ways that we can help local governments is through the expedited foreclosure process through the Montgomery County Board of Revision. And I don't know, Miami Township may have done this some in the past, West Carrollton did a lot of it in the past, and we're starting to see cases filed again. What is, what is an expedited foreclosure through the Board of Revision? An expedited foreclosure is an administrative foreclosure. It does not involve the court, it does not involve a sheriff's sale. Essentially, a local government is one of three entities that can work with a treasurer on this, along with the land bank, and I think it's C I C, or there's so many acronyms, but essentially, land banks and local governments can submit to the treasurer an application to have an abandoned property administratively foreclosed on. Why would they do that? It's because the local municipality wants to then take ownership of that property and likely use it for economic development purposes. As one can imagine, sometimes there are lawsuits and it changes the landscape a little bit. This was one program that was, has at least been temporarily affected by statewide litigation. The case is now headed, believe it or not, to the United States Supreme Court to be ruled on this summer, but there were, there was some lawsuits filed throughout the state, both in state court and federal court, challenging the validity of this statute, and so counties then had to restrict eligibility criteria. So what properties are eligible in Montgomery County for an expedited foreclosure? It has to be abandoned, of course, meaning no utilities, no squatters, no nothing. But the criteria that was changed was, the value of the parcel must be less than the impositions attached to the parcel, i.e. delinquent taxes and assessments. So if you have an abandoned building that is worth one hundred thousand dollars, and the impositions on the building are one hundred and five thousand dollars, then it would be eligible for this program, just as an example. So at the conclusion of that administrative foreclosure through the Board of Revision, which is myself, the county auditor, and the chair of the county commission, that property would then administratively revert back to Miami Township, and then you can do with it what you will. You can demolish it, you can fix it up and give it to a homeless veteran, you can fix it up and sell it, or you can fix it up and work out an economic development deal with a corporation to try and create more jobs. So if you are interested in, and this is a question we often get asked from local municipalities, they say, could we please see a list of all taxed delinquent parcels in our jurisdiction? We are happy to provide that to you, so that you can take a look, kind of know the landscape for yourself, and see if on that list you notice, and of course, I'm sure you already do know, all the abandoned properties that may exist, very few, of course, in Miami Township, but even if this is not an applicable tool now, you never know, and it may be in the future. So I would encourage you to think about that. Secondly, our office, when it comes to helping local governments, so often it comes down to data, you know, helping you with information that you may need to do your job. Of course, a lot of that zeroes in on properties, property values, abandonment, foreclosure, tax liens, anything of that nature. If you ever need any data whatsoever on real estate in Montgomery County, please feel free to come to us. Additionally, the county treasurer in every county sits on the board of the land bank. If you need any assistance from the land bank, that's how we're happy to help. Last but not least, treasurers may, under the Higher Revised Code, engage with local governments in something called manuscript debt, often to help with local public works finance, financing and things of that nature. Obviously, as interest rates continue to decline, this will probably be, actually, it's already becoming, a more popular option for local governments, where they're going to their treasurer, to see if there can be something worked out for public financing. So if you ever are interested in that option, I encourage you to get in touch with us, and we can come on in and discuss your project, and sit down with some of the other county finance professionals. finance professionals. So with that, oh, Ms. E. always reminds me to mention one thing. This is not a program that is under the jurisdiction of the treasurer, but it is under the county recorder and it involves real estate. And by the way, you see the county, our county recorder, Brandon McLean, has moved on to another position, and we're sad to see him go. He was a wonderful recorder and a joy to work with. But one of the things that he started here in Montgomery County was something called the FAN system, Fraud Alert Notification System. That allows your constituents, and I would highly encourage you to, highly encourage you to encourage your constituents to sign up for this, because it's a real problem in Montgomery County. Look up the county recorder's website. Find the FAN system, F-A-N. Your constituent can then put in his or her name, address, and email address. That way, whenever anybody comes into the county building to file anything on their property, whether it's a lien release, a mortgage, a mortgage release, or yes, a fraudulent deed with the hopes of fraudulently stealing somebody's property, the person who is enrolled in that system will get an automatic email sent to them. Montgomery County is seeing a huge, huge increase, as are many counties throughout the state, in individuals filing fraudulent liens on people's property for a variety of reasons, but mostly with the hope of stealing their home on paperwork, selling the home to an unsuspecting buyer, and then before the actual owner knows what's going on, the fraudster leaves and can never be found again, and they leave with that unsuspecting buyer's money. And now the unsuspecting buyer and the actual owner of the property are having to fight in court over this. It is not pretty, but it's happening so often. Unfortunately, the Ohio Revised Code requires, and I know county officials are speaking with our legislature about this, but recorders are really handcuffed. If somebody comes in and wants to file a deed, and if that deed meets certain requirements, the county's required to take it. And so hopefully, the Ohio Revised Code will be fixed soon to address this issue. I know the treasurers are working on some things to address it, but I won't keep you any longer. I know I went on for quite a while. More than anything, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to come before you and tell you a little bit about what we do. I want each of you to know that you are always welcome in the treasurer's office to come by, take a personal look, learn about how we do what we do, if that's something that's of interest to you. We had the pleasure of sitting down with some of your administrators last year to kind of tell them about some of the things we could offer. But it's an honor to work with you and for the constituents that we all serve. So are there any questions that we could entertain this evening? Okay, well, congratulations again on your success last night. I'll leave you with one parting thought. If you've never signed up to be a poll worker with the Montgomery County Board of Elections, I do it now. It's a very long and intense sixteen-hour day, but it's a great experience. So especially for elected officials, you get to see the hard work of all the volunteers who are behind the scenes making elections happen. And you'll need to take the next day off, trust me. It's pretty intense. But thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, and staff. It's a, it's a joy and a pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
New business, Resolution forty-three and forty-four and forty-five. Mr. Snyder?
All right, good evening, Board. Forty-three, 2023 is a resolution intended to clarify an issue related to a position going from a bargaining unit position to a non-bargaining unit position and how that is covered under Employee Manual. This particular situation is not adequately addressed in our current employee manual, so we have proposed a mechanism to address this for this particular position. So you have some additional information in the resolution and in the memo in your packets, and I'd be happy to take any questions. Otherwise, Resolution forty-four, 2023 is a resolution to reappoint a member to the Hillgrove Union Cemetery Board. Mr. Culp has expressed a desire to continue to serve on that board. His term of office is coming up at the end of May, and this reappointment proposes a reappointment to May 31st of 2026. We'd be happy to take any questions. Resolution forty-five, 2023 concerns a donation agreement. We do have a resident that has expressed a desire to donate a park bench to Cranes Run Park. In working with this resident, and because of some questions that have arisen in previous years regarding donations made by family members to our park system, we wanted to start off on the right foot with this donation going forward. So we have prepared a donation agreement just outlining the proposal by the donor, as well as the obligations of the township. Essentially, the township would commit to maintaining the bench and that location for a minimum of ten years. And then the donor would, donor or donor's family would have the opportunity to take back the plaque that is being proposed to be donated. But again, this just outlines the circumstances. In many of these cases, these donations can stretch over, in some cases, several decades, and we may not be dealing with the original donor when it comes time to address any issues that might need to be addressed with the particular donation of equipment or trees or other items. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to address those.
Mr. Schweickert, Resolution forty-six, 2023.
Good evening, Board. Resolution forty-six is a surplus resolution. Back in February, we had authorization to use ARP funding to replace three parks vehicles. To our surprise, the first one, the F-250, came in fairly quick in April. So the other two should, we have an estimated arrival for September, but currently, we'd like to surplus the 2008 F-250 along with its auxiliary attachments, the snow plow and the heat, the Reese Hitch Spreader, repurpose those funds back into the Parks Department parts line item. So if you have any questions about this surplus, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hearing none. Mr. McCord, Resolution forty-seven, 2023.
Good evening, Board. This is, Resolution forty-seven, 2023 is to amend the appropriation for the Kingsridge TIF fund. There's, an inspection was performed on the traffic signal along Kingsridge Drive and determined that there were some repairs that needed to be made to that signalization. And when we put the budgets together at the beginning of the year, we did not include that. So this is a request for five thousand dollars towards the inspection and repair of those traffic signals.
Hearing no questions, I will move to the public comment period, if anyone wishes to come forward and make a public comment. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, move to consideration of resolutions and motion. I will make a motion to approve Resolution forty-three dash 2023, a resolution to adjust the conversion of sick leave for the Assistant Chief of Police Position. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Resolution forty-four dash 2023, a resolution to reappoint Township representative to the Hillgrove Union Cemetery Board of Trustees. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Abstain.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution forty-five dash 2023, a resolution to authorize a donation agreement. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Resolution forty-six dash 2023, a resolution to declare surplus property and authorize the sale of said property. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Resolution forty-seven dash 2023, a resolution to approve an amended, amended appropriation of funds for 2023 for the Kingsridge TIF Fund Number 253. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
We have no public hearings. Department head comments. Chief Stegelmeyer.
Good evening again, Board. I'd like to take just this moment to thank the residents of Miami Township for showing the support to the police department through last night's levy. I would also like to take another moment to give special attention and thanks to members of the Miami Township Business District, many of which formed a committee to help get the word out about the levy and helped in the successful passing of this levy. Specifically, Amy Zahora, Dave Duber, John Stafford, Sergeet Matu, Mark Keyholes, and Joe Polken, all donated their time and resources to help us make sure this was a success. And I just wanted to thank them for the hard work and their dedication to the township.
Mr. Schweickert?
Good evening, Board. I believe I touched on this last week, but we do have residents that watch our YouTube channel, so I'd like to hit this one more time. As of today, we started putting out flyers for the Fishing Derby. That is going to be Saturday, June 3rd, from 10:00 to 1:00 at Miami View Park. And as staff, we're really excited to put this on for kids and families this year. We do have prizes for longest fish for first, second, and third place. And then we also have a prize for the smallest fish. I definitely want to give a thanks to the Community Foundation. They stepped up and donated the prize money for this event, so big thanks to them. And then again, I want to thank admin staff and public works staff for a lot of hard work to try and make this a successful event.
Is that an event that requires advanced registration?
Yes, registration can be calling our Public Works Office, 866-4661, or submitting an email to publicworks@miamityoungship.com, and then you'll be on the list.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson?
Mr. McCord?
I have none tonight, sir.
Mr. Snyder?
I do have two items. One, I do have a request to make, have the board make a motion to amend the agenda per the language that you've been provided. But I also wanted to express towards the events from last night, Miami Township residents have provided us an opportunity to continue to improve our community through a sustained investment in a professional police department. I appreciate the tough choices many residents had to make in a period of rising costs in deciding the issue before them last night. I want to thank our officers, the chief of police, and all the employees of the police department for the efforts they make day in and day out to earn the trust of the community and build relationships with those they serve. We will be working hard in the coming year to implement our plans for staffing and investment in the police department, and I look forward to working with our chief, his staff, and the Miami Township community to continually improve the services we provide. Thank you, Board. That's all I have.
Elected official comments. Mr. Klingerman?
I'll come out this evening.
Mr. Culp?
Yeah, about the Fishing Derby, if they show up? If they show up without, without registering, do, what's the situation if a kid shows up without having pre-registered, so to speak?
We haven't taken that into consideration, but I believe that it'd be acceptable if they showed up the day of. We should have slots available for them, but we are providing the bait for all the children, but they do need to show up with their own tackle, their own fishing pole.
Okay.
I do also want to mention, we have Kona Ice that's going to be out there, Fire Department, Public Works, we're going to have Touch the Truck, Police Department, and we have some extra activities. Community Foundation will be passing out snacks, so it should be a really awesome community event.
Mr. Posey?
I have none.
I have none either. Do we need to make a motion to amend the?
Yes.
Agenda. Okay. So I will make a motion to amend the agenda for the reason for the executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Given that, I will make a motion to go into executive session at 6:44 for the purposes of considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual unless the public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing in accordance with ORC 121.22 subsection G1. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
We will be dismissing and adjourning directly from executive session, taking no further action this evening. Thank you.